At this time, I would like to call the February 16th, 2022 Board of Education meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I will accept a motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening.
So moved.
Anne, second?
Second, Bernice.
Bernice, any discussion? Any changes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. We have our minutes of the February 2nd, 22 meeting. Lots of twos there. They're presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Princella?
Second.
And Noelani. And any corrections, discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, and we have comments. Do we have anything, Martha? Before we begin, I would like to read my statement. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Thank you for that. And the first person I have signed up is Jonathan James.
Right the microphone right there, Jonathan. You can grab it, yep.
I can take my mask off?
Yep.
Appreciate that.
You're more than six feet away, you're good.
Okay. Hello, Mike?
It's also clearer for the people at home.
Okay, I'll just turn this way, if this is okay. I'm here to speak on the behalf of CEO, Mr. Rivera and Leonard.
We just need you to talk to us up here, okay?
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, all right.
First time.
Okay, I'm here to speak on the behalf of Mr. Leonard and Rivera about the support towards athletics and build connections upon students in Schenectady High School. He's given me rides home from basketball games, they support them. He's gave athletes rides home. Has built deep connections with a lot of students who come to Schenectady High School. And understands the cause of systematic racism upon our system and speaks proudly about other information. And yeah, really, that's really about it.
Well, thank you, Jonathan.
No problem.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Is that it? Am I good?
Yeah, you're good.
You tell us, Jonathan.
The second person I have signed up is Lisa Fagan.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Lisa Fagan.
If you want to take your mask off, you may do so as well, so that...
My name is Lisa Fagan. I'm a special education teacher at Schenectady High School. This is Jill Ferrucci, she is also a special education teacher.
You're the next person I had on the list.
Schenectady High School. We both teach in intensive skills classes. We have students that are physically and intellectually disabled. I have two students in wheelchairs and we both have students that have problems with gait, stability, and coordination. I'd like to speak to you tonight about the discrimination we've experienced at the high school over just the past two weeks. I want to be clear. The students at Schenectady High School are not the problem. The students are kind, inclusive, and friends with my students. They have been in the school community with them for years. To the rest of the student community, my students and her students are their peers. The following occurrences speak to the inequities and toxic culture that people with disabilities suffer at the high school on a routine basis due to administrative decisions and actions. Foremost, when we returned to school after our snow day, the doors that the students enter and exit through were not cleared of snow, making it difficult to even get into the school in a wheelchair. Some of our students fell more than once. One of the entrances remained that way until Wednesday, February 3rd, when I had to personally text an administrator to have it cleared. The night before this dismissal, three of my paraprofessionals had to lift and drag a student's wheelchair, their irreplaceable customized wheelchair, through the snow to get her to the bus. This is dangerous for all involved and it could damage the chair, which would have been a disaster because you only get a chair replaced every five years. As of this morning, the door my students use as a place of refuge and their evacuation point is still not cleared. Next, I have two students in my room who attended the semi-formal at Schenectady High on Saturday night. I wanted to give you a picture, but I wasn't sure about Furba, so I can't. The girls had an amazing time and they'll have a memory to...
...in learning communities and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. And I wanted to make sure that everyone heard that because this is not an easy feat and they don't get additional compensation for it. This is something that they pursue kind of on their own. Next slide, Ethan. Each year, the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards releases a nationwide, statewide data. And I don't know if people know this, but we have the second highest, most nationally board certified teachers in New York State. Only New York City has more. That's pretty significant. New York City has a million students, which means they have like 30,000 teachers. And they're the only ones above us when it comes to national board certification out of 700 districts in New York State. So that's no small feat. So I definitely want to give credit to our teachers, our SFT members who continue to push themselves to get this. So you can see on the chart, we are at 77. And, you know, we're ahead of some other folks. So I just wanted to point that out. Very competitive, so hopefully we'll get to 299 and catch up. No, just kidding. It's going to take a while, but who knows? Well, here's why we're here tonight. And I want to make sure, Ethan, next slide, that we take a moment to recognize some of our teachers. We have five that just received this honor, national board certification. I think two of them are in the audience. So if you're here and I call your name and you come down, I have something for you, kind of recognizing in front of the board. So Rebecca Benjamin, who's a literacy specialist. I don't think she's here tonight, but we want to make sure she's recognized. She's at Page Elementary School. She has six years in the district. She's also finished her PhD in curriculum and instruction. I think Rebecca had some health concerns and I think she was going to be watching online, if I remember my notes correctly. Right, Karen? All right. So Rebecca, I know you're watching virtually. We will have this certificate brought to you. When I go visit Dr. JP, I will make sure to drop it off. Next, we have Danya Klue. Is Danya here? Come on down, Danya. She's a reading teacher at Zaller Elementary School. Yeah, let's give her a round of applause. Danya, we want to thank you for all your hard work. Make us proud. There you go.
Congratulations.
Next slide, Ethan. Next, we have Julie Nugebauer, who's a high school math teacher. Julie, is Julie here tonight? Come on down, Julie, don't be shy. I'm sorry if I said your last name wrong, Nugebauer.
Story of my life, Anibal, Hannibal, Hannibal, cannibal.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Julie.
And we have, Jessica was not going to be able to make it tonight, if I remember correctly, right, Karen? And we do want to recognize Jessica, who's also another Schenectady High school teacher. They got a lot of nationally board certified folks at the high school living environment. She took out all her babies in the picture, put some smiley faces on them when she sent it to us. She's been here in the district for 10 years. Congratulations, Jessica, on this accomplishment. And last but not least, Ellen Lynn, if you did know Ellen, she was with us, but she relocated to California recently. So we do want to make sure she recognizes, she did earn the honor with us. So we want to make sure she gets that honor.
She taught physics.
That's right, physics, yep. Thank you. So congratulations to our nationally board certified teachers. Continue to help make our district shine. Thank you for all you do for our kids and for making our district a great place. Want to move on to some other comments. Yesterday, we had an amazing event for My Brother's Keeper Schenectady. We called it a kind of relaunch and a call to action. The excitement, the unveiling of the logo. We had key representation in the crowd, community members, various dignitaries from the community, many individuals in attendance. I specifically want to thank our board president, vice president, Anne Riley, who all showed up and supported us in this endeavor. Want to thank the mayor, McCarthy, as well. Dr. Austin from the State Education Department, he's the assistant commissioner and he leads his work across the state. Want to also recognize Dr. Coto, Mr. Brian Ledbetter, who do this work at kind of the ground level within the district. And again, so many other community members who attended. City council was there, pretty strong and full force. Really appreciated them showing up. They are here to support our young men and our young boys of color and we look forward to their partnership. I also want to recognize the two speakers. If you hadn't had an opportunity to see what they said, it's on social media. Check out our Facebook page. We put a little snippet of the video. Nate Dale and Trey Tillman were amazing. They're going to do some really tremendous things when they move on because their stories were great, their testimonials just gave you goosebumps if you were in the audience. I also want to thank everyone in our school community who continues to participate in our secondary school redesign sessions. The survey has, I believe, over 1,000 respondents on the survey, which is, in the words of Mr. Chank, he hasn't seen a survey with that type of response in a long time. So thank you. Your feedback is vital to this process. We will continue to communicate next steps of what the feedback says. You know, the biggest thing that Deputy Superintendent Rutnick has told me is they want to make sure that this happens. That's been the constant feedback. The kids want it, families want it, they want to see some different things go on at the high school. So we're going to do our best to make that happen and we'll be bringing those findings back to the board before anything gets implemented. Tomorrow is our virtual job fair. So if you haven't had an opportunity, it's on our, again, on our website, on social media. It goes from four to eight. It's still not too late to sign up. There's information right on our website to register and attend. So jump on in. We have all these virtual rooms with folks and recruiting for the various divisions. And I think we have like 17 rooms, Carlos, is that correct? Over 20 rooms of different divisions in the district looking for talent. So come on board. We also have a lot of great events occurring across the district for Black History Month. So please check them out on social media. These photos and stories and videos continue to be shared on various websites. Next week is winter recess. I do want to make sure folks know we are not technically in session, President's Day, and then the rest of the week is off for winter break. We are sending some test kits home on Sunday for the governor who has provided us. So students on Thursday, they're going to be going home this week with a letter and a couple test kits. Our request for the families is to test your kids the Friday and the Sunday before returning to school on the 28th so that you have that 36-hour window. And if there happens to be a positive, you can keep your child at home so that we don't have any spread. Our numbers have gone down considerably. We continue to project a trend in a downward fashion, which is great. And then coming up after the break, I just want to remind folks we have a board meeting on the week we come back. We'll be sharing the academic update along with the presentation on our K-5 literacy curriculum to the board. So it'll be some exciting stuff when we come back. And also an important reminder, early in the year, we made a switch on our calendar for Election Day. We moved the superintendent's, the full superintendent's conference day. So March 11th is still a superintendent's conference day, but it's just a half day so that kids still come to school. So I just want to make sure that parents remember that. It will come quick. So I just want to make sure we make a note of that. So your child will have school Friday, March 11th. It'll just be a half day as opposed to a full day of being at home because we modified that to compensate for Election Day. And then again, one final congratulations to our nationally board certified teachers. I want to wish them and everyone else watching at home and in the audience a restful winter break next week. And those conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Princella?
I don't have much to say. I just want to reiterate what the superintendent said and wish everyone a safe and nice vacation coming up. And also want to congratulate our fabulous teachers for their national board certification. And I do want to mention that I went to the girls' basketball game and they rock. Even though they lost, they kept trying and they never gave up and they fought harder and harder and they ended up scoring more in the last half than the first half. So it was nice to see the girls play their games.
Thank you, Princella. Noelani?
No, I just also wanted to send a congratulatory message out to the teachers for their national board certification and that is that.
Thank you. Jamaica?
Only one comment. Thank you to those that chose to speak tonight or to those that send their emails in. And a reminder that if you're not able to be here in person, you can send the email to Martha and she does a wonderful job reading and making sure that we are as inclusive as possible so that voices are heard. But I do know that whether you send an email in or you stand up here in person, it is no easy thing, no matter how many times you do it. I speak from personal experience. So thank you for taking the time to be here for any reason that you showed up today, whether it was to sit and listen or to speak, but especially for those that lend their voice so that we hear what it is that you think we need to hear. It's important and we hope that you can continue to do that. And encourage others, tell them it wasn't as scary and it was okay to come up here and talk. Okay?
We don't bite hard, right?
I don't bite at all. I don't know what Kathy's talking about. I'm not going to co-sign that. Okay.
Anne?
Just a couple things. I think Anibal touched on most of it. But I also wanted to mention Blue Roses Theater Company's production of Everybody last week. That was absolutely fabulous. I just, I enjoyed it so much and I know everyone did. And I know Kathy was there the night I went. So congratulations to all the students involved in that. They really were impressive. I also want to mention that I attended a NISBA webinar on curriculum and I think Kathy's going to touch on that some more. And I don't know if Anibal mentioned, but at the event, I'm on Pleasant for My Brother's Keeper. I also wanted to mention that our CEOs were there too. So I think that was really important that they were there to show their support for our students and for that program.
Wonderful. Thank you, Anne. Bernice?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things as well. I also attended the MBK event and I just was so moved by how supportive the students were for each other, especially those that were part of MBK. It was great to see how strong the network and you could see how strong the network was. And the two young men that Anibal talked about, Superintendent Anibal talked about, you can see, as well as many of the other students, how they're going to emerge as leaders. It was very, you know, watching that, if you watched the video, I mean, it was very moving and I thought it was very passionate and the students really showed how connected they were to the program. So it was a really nice program. And I do want to thank the staff as well. It was done really well. It was very nice. So I really enjoyed it. The girls' basketball game, I also attended. Kathy was also there. It was like, Princella, I'm going to echo what Princella said, they worked hard. They really did and they never gave up. And I thought that was extremely impressive. I watched the JV, I didn't stay too long for the varsity, but they really worked hard. So they should be proud of not giving up. And then I did want to mention a few other things. So I'm the board liaison for Mount Pleasant and MLK and they're doing a bunch of things for Black History Month. So Mount Pleasant, I know Jamaica and I are going on Friday?
Friday.
Friday? Yeah, they have, Mount Pleasant is having a Black History Month celebration and they're having stations and they're having circles and they invited, you know, several people is in-house, but they invited several people to attend and help out the girls. So I'm really excited about that. And MLK has a host of things going on and I do want to highlight it because I think it's amazing. On February 3rd, Jordan Taylor Hill came to teach the fourth and fifth graders African dance and drumming. And let me rewind. MPMS, Mount Pleasant, the principal there is, and I apologize if I mispronounce her last name, Ms. Beattie.
Beattie, yep.
Okay, Nicole Beattie. And then MLK, it's Munret. So February 11th, Mrs. Savage and Mrs. Sanders, both TAs, made soul food lunch for the entire faculty and staff. And I know Ms. Munret said she wanted to help and they said, nope, we're going to take care of it. So February 15th, musician Reggie Harris performed for the Underground Railroad for students and they learned new songs. And then February 17th, the Underground Railroad Walk. Classes signed up for specific stops. And I guess they kind of redo a certain part of the school so it looks like the Underground Railroad. So they're doing a lot of different things. And then Walter Simkins, who's an advocate, I know many people know him, he will be doing, he will be in a performance, he will be doing a performance about the Underground Railroad. And then a side note, I thought this was really neat because I really believe in positive phone calls. Ms. Munret, the principal, did a challenge for the teachers, 100 positive phone calls for the 100th day of school, which is today. And they exceeded the 100 call. That's amazing. I think that's great. And then my last thing too, I just hope everyone, and I'm just kind of echoing what people said, you have a safe, restful, enjoyable, fun, lazy, if possible, a week off. Enjoy, enjoy. Thank you.
I, as was mentioned, I attended the play Everybody at Blue Roses Theater. It was nice after two years to have a play actually happen where you could see people and they could see us and have the reactions and so on. I thought it was a wonderful, wonderful thing. And they're doing another, they're doing a musical in middle of March. That's very fast turnaround. And so keep your eye open for that. Anne mentioned that she and I and maybe some others did listen to the webinar that NISBA put on on the role of the board in terms of curriculum adoption. And I've handed out the handout that came from that, it's a curriculum guide. We, of course, had heard from Ms. Chisholm last week and we'll be hearing again, as Anibal indicated, in two weeks on more of our curriculum reviews. And that is a major subject among school boards around the state at this point. Let's see, we had, I also attended a webinar on advocacy, which is very important in the state. We're fortunate this year that we're not having to advocate for as much money as we have had in the past. There are a few points that we are emphasizing and those we will be taking up. I have to say though, that it appears as if the legislature is much taken up with the redistricting that's gone on. And so I'm not even quite sure who we ought to talk to. It seems as if our legislators have changed for the city of Schenectady at this point. But I did send two letters off to Assemblyman Steck and, let's see, Senator?
Tedesco?
I guess it was Tedesco, even though he's the one who's in question.
And Santa Barbara.
And then Michelle Hinsey may or may not be in this area as well as an assemblywoman and...
Santa Barbara.
Santa Barbara.
Santa Barbara.
And Assemblyman Santa Barbara, yeah.
Like we currently have the same members. We don't know what happens after election.
After voting, yeah.
We don't know what happens.
So that's what's happening in the world of advocacy in terms of our concerns with the New York State Legislature and the budget. I think at this point, we will move on. I give my congratulations too to the national board certified teachers, the five of them. I'm sorry that one has left us already, but, and it's nice that we are maintaining our placement as number two, just beyond, behind New York City. And I think in the entire time I've been on the board, that's been the situation. We've had a large number of nationally board certified...
California is hard to say no to, you know, so it could have been the weather.
Her husband got a job.
Oh, okay. Love does that too.
I was going to add, for the winter break, I hope you get to enjoy some warmth and please bring some back here if you're going away to get it. That's where we are at the moment, so. Okay, at this point, we will move on to our agenda. And we have a budget presentation from the executive leadership team, general support, operations and maintenance, and transportation and security. And we have Terry Galouli, our chief financial officer, with us.
Terry, just make sure you grab the mic so people at home can hear you on the stream. You got to push it up, I think, the button.
Hello?
There you go.
Got you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for having me again tonight. Tonight's presentation, as President Lewis mentioned, is going to be based on the support and transportation of the budget. Once again, our budget is going to support our mission and our pillars and the budget development of our mission. For the last few weeks, I have been going to each building, meeting with every building's principal to discuss the budget process and providing them the opportunity to identify needs in their individual building and make sure that we are funding these buildings equitable. So part of that mission, you know, make sure that we have a financially sound budget that we talked about at the last meeting. Just want to remind everybody about the budget development for the survey. To list the priorities. Hope everybody had the opportunity to go online and complete that. When I printed this slide, we had 133. Yesterday, we did a big email push and that went up to 400. Little short of 400. The survey is going to close on February 25th, which is next Friday. So I hope everybody has the opportunity to get on there and identify your priorities and your input would be reviewed and we'll review those results at one of the meetings and then we'll concentrate on those areas as we develop the budget and go through the various departments.
Have you looked at the responses yet or just...
I have not had a chance yet, nope. But I'll probably start doing...
Just wondering if we were doing it in progress or waiting till...
Yeah, we'll probably at the next meeting, we'll identify some of the areas as we continue creating the budget in the different areas. But definitely we'll present what we found out from that survey and make sure we concentrate in those areas.
We've just been monitoring the count, try to get a good number of...
Yeah, it was slow until yesterday, we did a push and I'm sure Karen will do another one, you know, as the week goes along next week. Just want to review again the 21, 22 expenditures, how we're basically starting and what we're... starting and what we're starting from in regards to the budget. And the two combined that we're gonna speak about tonight, the general support is eight point five-two percent of the total budget and the pupil transportation is the five point six-two percent. Although they're kind of smaller percentages of the budget as a whole, they're obviously essential parts of the budget and um, very important to the district and the support that it provides for our students. The general support, um, the breakdown of the eighteen million, six hundred fifty-one thousand, those are the various categories. Um, I list the categories, how we submit the financial information, um, budget presentation when it goes line by line in the total of the categories and also how we present, uh, report that at the year end on our ST3 to the State Ed and the Office of State Controllers. So this is the breakdown of the general support budget. Uh, majority of it, as you can see, the twelve million, uh, four hundred seventeen thousand is central services, which mostly made up our, of our operation and maintenance. And I'm gonna touch on all these various subjects as we go through. The general support total, the eighteen million, six fifty-one are broken down in these categories. Uh, the Board of Education, um, and you see a dollar amount there. And on each of these categories, I have the total FTEs in that department. So it kind of gives you an idea what makes up of those uh, dollar amounts. Our Board of Education, just to let you know, is mostly of the annual NISBA, um, the hosting of the budget votes. Um, there's only a point five salary in there, so there's no salaries really related to that, but it's mostly the um, items that we provide you, military supplies and the conventions and those type of uh, things. Central Administration is uh, the superintendents office, along with the deputy superintendent and the assistant superintendent of innovation, equity and engagement, along with the community school coordinators and the IE specialist under that department. So that has a thirteen point five FTE. Um, then the finance department is the business office, uh, which consists of myself, the assistant and basically the people that process the payroll, accounts payable, offer all the financial support into the district, including the purchasing and the tax collector. Um, the staff, which includes our legal services fees that we pay to our lawyers, our support, the human resource office, records management officer, which we receive that service from BOSI's and the public information and services, which is basically um, communications department. And then the central services, which I, we identified previously as one of the larger uh, portion of this part of the budget, um, which is our operations and of the plant, maintenance of the plant, the security of the plant, which during the twenty uh, one, twenty-two budget, we did not have anybody currently in that role, but as we develop this budget, we'll identify the need for that. And um, then the central storeroom and the central printing and mailing. And then we have special items, which includes the um, you know, liability insurance, school association dues, the refund of real property tax and also the um, BOSI's administration, which should not show up on there under the special items. Basically the cost of the admin support of BOSI's to the district. So the ELT team, um, with Capital Region BOSI's needs assessment that was presented at the February twenty twenty-one um, board meeting. I'm not gonna review what basically you guys been through that, um, but this is basically how our um, organizational chart is currently structured. Uh, we have all the positions and the director positions filled. We have one interim at the Director of uh, Technology and the um, Operations, the Facilities Director is not on here, that's not filled, but these are the positions that are filled. The reason why I broke them down between instructional support, the way it gets reported, um, on the right-hand side, you'll see the, you know, the support of the, um, the support staff that we're discussing tonight, which includes those categories. And then once we reviewed the instructional, we'll get into more detail about the teaching and learning, planning accountability, student support services and the executive directors of the schools. Um, so that just shows you where we are based on their recommendations and um, how we currently are staffing that organization chart. Central Services, um, Operation and Manag- Maintenance. Um, as the district's school buildings are starting to age or have been aging, you know, we are facing a growing challenge of maintaining our facilities at a level that will enable our teachers to meet the needs of our students. So the district is committed to providing a clean and safe environment for students and district employees. Um, routine, unexpected maintenance demands are bound to arise. It is essential that we proactively develop and implement a plan for dealing with them. Um, a sound maintenance plan will ensure that our facilities are and will be cared for appropriately. Um, as you know, uh, we're currently in a building condition survey. The SEI design team has visited every building, spoke, has met with people within the building and they have identified um, our needs for the building upkeep. Um, this is a five-year plan that will probably lead towards a capital project in the future, but it's also given us the opportunity to speak with them and see some immediate needs as we walk through these buildings. So um, SEI is expecting to have their performance of their um, building condition survey completed and presented to you at the June twenty-second Board of Education meeting.
And I know Bernice and Kathy participated in part of that review, so they, this upcoming break, they will be coming into the buildings when everyone's out. Um, they're gonna be doing updated drawings. We found that in some of our buildings, we don't even have all the drawings. They're gonna be taking like these images, they do this three D thing, so yeah, there'll be some drones going around, they'll be doing all kinds of cool stuff, so. More to come in that on June and uh, I only mention that because it's really important because we have two buildings that we own still that are vacant and so when they come in June, it'll be real important as they prioritize for us to get feedback from the board around the direction around our facilities.
You're talking about Fulton and Elmer?
Yeah, Fulton and Elmer are still technically our properties.
So the, uh, the building condition survey, obviously it will detect the long-term strategic planning, um, but also like I mentioned, it's definitely the immediate need that we need and that will require some money allocated to uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget to take care of those areas, um, such as like equipment, contractual service, asbestos abatement, um, utilities. So these are the type of items that make up uh, the overall operation and maintenance of budget. So it's not just the FTE, FTEs that you saw on the previous slide, but all these expenses basically go into the operation and maintenance of the budget.
And utilities, if you don't feel it at home, they are going up, so.
We're definitely feeling it here. We are part of a purchase consortium through BOSI's, um, so I think we kind of balance that out, but obviously we will probably project increases in the uh, future year. So um, in the operation and maintenance, as we all know, um, during the pandemic of twenty twenty-one, we had the following layoffs in each of the categories, senior custodian, custodian and cleaners, a total of twenty-two. Uh, I went back to nineteen twenty to do a comparison of where we currently are staffed and where we need to be going forward and what we're gonna budget in the twenty-two, twenty-three to get us fully staffed. And um, working with the uh, operation and maintenance supervisors, um, our staffing level was a hundred and five in nineteen twenty, pre-pandemic. Um, those were still not fully staffed and I guess we were missing some FTEs back then. Currently, we're at eighty-six, so the layoffs that we did have, we called a lot of them back. Um, some did come back, some have not, but we did reach out to everybody. And then our full staff of the twenty-two, twenty-three, you know, looking to fill these vacancies and any additional staffing that we um, have identified that is needed to support the buildings and the repairs that are necessary throughout the buildings. So we're looking to get our staffing level up to a hundred and fourteen. Um, we currently have that, um, as you saw in the previous budget, um, slides, I think we had like ninety-one FTEs or ninety-two, so it'll be a little bit more, but we are currently in an okay position to fund the additional um, FTEs that we're looking for in those departments.
So hopefully the virtual fair tomorrow will help in that arena.
Hopefully, hopefully.
As well as others.
And we've got the vacancies here, currently four maintenance, seven custodians and seventeen cleaners. And so also the new contract is hopefully more attractive for those.
Yeah, we have current staff members covering those currently, um, overtime, additional shifts, so obviously it's a burden on everybody, so we do definitely wanna um, fill those positions as soon as possible. Just to give you an idea, what we're looking at um, with the budget, with the overall square footage, like it's kind of surprised, you, you know, we have a lot of buildings, but when you really look at what they do on a daily basis, um, cleaning one point six million square feet of all the uh, buildings combined, um, and then acres, you know, a hundred and twenty-five acres of surrounds the buildings. So just put those numbers perspective, you know, we look at the um, the planning guide for maintaining school facilities, which is put together like a packet with suggestions for schools and the FTEs that you should have to support those uh, square footage and make sure they meet the level and expectations of our programs and the cleansiness. So we follow that, we look at it, uh, reviewing with the director and with our um, fully staffing of those vacancies, we should meet those requirements, um, those recommendations, I should say, of maintaining this area. And as you see, even with the two vacant buildings, you know, adds additional to the one point six if they're actually occupied. So just, you know, just wanted you to see that to make you realize, you know, it's a lot of space, obviously. Um, the next that we're gonna talk about, um, the superintendent's gonna speak to more about this in his presentation, so I'm just gonna, you know, show you what's in the school climate and safety budget, um, what we're looking to uh, fund in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget and some of the monitoring systems of the building ID access and cameras, but we're gonna talk about that more at the next presentation, so I'm not gonna go into much detail about this. And then transportation, um, you know, to transport our students, twelve million, uh, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, uh, we do not have any in-district employees that actually do the transportation. We have a couple people, supervisors and staff level. Um, but basically our policy for transportation services that we uh, should provide to meet the needs of the students of the district within the specified limits and areas established by the BOE. Um, right now, students in grades pre-K through five who attend elementary schools, which are not more than one mile, but less than five point five miles receive that transportation. And then the students six through twelve who attend middle and high schools, um, one point five miles, um, but less than five point five miles. So those are requirements of us transporting the students. On the next slide, um, basically we have twenty-five uh, square miles. Uh, we transport currently four thousand, seven hundred forty of our students, um, other nine thousand, one hundred eighty-two, which is approximately fifty-two percent of our students. On the in-district, uh, three thousand, three hundred thirty-four, three thousand, three hundred and forty, and then uh, special education in the pre-K program. The pre-K programs that we do is a, a special community-based organizations. They're not our district pre-K that are in our buildings, but they're community-based organizations that we provide the transportation for those. And then our out-of-district, um, our special education that um, have special programs that they have, we have to meet and transport to them and the private schools, a number of students that take advantage of that. Um, we go to the surrounding areas of Albany, Saratoga, Resslier, um, Gildonlin, Niskuin, O'Rourke and Scotia, and then those are the private schools that we currently are transporting our students. And then a big um, expense on the transportation department is the Kenny Vento, if any student is considered homeless and with, um, we are required to transfer them back to the district uh, within a fifty-mile radius. So if they find residence somewhere outside of the uh, area, we are still required to bring them back to school in the Schenectady District as this is their home base. If they elect to go to school where they relocate, then that's the school that they relocate responsibility. So you can see we have forty-eight families and uh, that are actually outside of our district parameters that we are bringing back into the district and fourteen that are in district that were going about of, beyond the regular, normal uh, transportation. And then other runs, um, you know, again, athletic, approximately two hundred of them a year, which is, you know, there's only a hundred and eighty school days, so if you consider that in relation to how many school days, um, they're running all the time. Then we provide field trips uh, throughout the school day. Right now, due to COVID, that number's down, but that expense obviously will go up in the future. We provided fifteen so far this year, but we expect that as I'm meeting with the building principals every day throughout the last couple of weeks, you know, they're showing that um, willingness that they want to take advantage of the field trips again, get the kids that who have missed so much over the last few years, the opportunity to attend field trips. And then our after-school programs, um, as we increase the usage of those and expand those programs in the summer school and summer enrichment, we expect the uh, expense to go up also in those departments. But like I said, uh, transportation is one of those uh, expense-based reimbursement aid and we are currently receiving ninety percent on that, so that's a good thing. And just to give you an idea what the, the normal transportation looks like, um, you know, you see buses all the time, where they're going, where they're coming. Uh, first tier, uh, the pre-K, fifth grade, the buses arrive at the school approximately seven twenty, seven thirty for a start time at eight o'clock. And then they depart around two twenty-five after dismissal of two fifteen. And then a second tier is the middle school, high school, um, the buses arrive around eight, eight-ten and they depart around three forty, um, for a three-thirty dismissal. Um, the one-tier runs, which means that a bus is only going to one school, like one, just to the elementary, we're just doing the middle school, junior, senior, high school. We have thirty-two of those runs. First and second tier runs is, um, you know, they go to the elementary first, then they go pick up middle school, high school students and go there next. Uh, we have fifty-five of those. And then the first tier run with students with special needs and first and second tier run, students uh, with special needs sixty-nine. So overall, there's a hundred and sixty-six um, runs throughout the district and the twenty-five square mile radius is, you know, quite a bit of buses. Um, we currently contract with six vendors that uh, support the transportation of the students and we're also working with the Capital District Transportation Authority to provide transportation also and we'd like to utilize that more in the future if possible, especially for our high school. I believe uh, superintendent said there's six of them that are currently running directly to the high school?
Ten.
Ten. Ten for the CDT.
Ten lines.
All right, uh, the tax levy, um, if you could click on that link for me, please? In calculating the tax levy, um, we do not have the, all the information currently to complete this, that's why I was not unable to provide you our tax levy maximize, maximum limit. Um, but overall, um, there's a complicated, well, not complicated, but a formula that is distributed by the Office of State Controller. Is that working up there or no?
They can see it though, the board members can see it.
You have it, you can see, if you click that, all right, yeah. So basically you start with, I'll just go through it real quickly and then once we get our actual, I have to submit this by March first uh, to the Office of State Controllers, where I plan on having that done. We're working with the county to get the total pilots. But basically you take your um, prior year tax levy, um, any prior year reserve offset, which we don't currently have, and then um, the tax growth, tax-based growth factor is one point oh this year. So basically that is just the, um, on the bottom, you'll see the formula, uh, the explanation for what it means for tax-based uh, growth factor, which is just a quantity change such as the new construction, newly taxable uh, status of existing properties throughout the district. Um, then you add your pilots from the prior year, which is payment in lieu of taxes for those organizations that have that agreement. And then uh, the capital tax exclusions, basically they exclude the amount that you pay for your capital debt and what you're getting back from the state. So basically, you, you come up with the form, after you do the formula with the current year pilots and the allowable level growth factor, which is two percent, which is the CPI, which has the um, definition down at the bottom. So that would give you your maximum tax levy that you're allowed to uh, assess on the taxpayers. In the past, um, which I'll show next, is the historical, which kind of shows you where we were for the last few years. I don't, I don't have control anymore. All right, so thank you. The tax levy for the last, uh, since two thousand seventeen, eighteen, um, we went down two point four percent and then minus one percent, minus one point four, four percent. In the last two years, we have been flat. Um, as I mentioned, the maximum allowed tax levy will be submitted by March first. Once we determine what our tax levy can be, uh, we could assess up to that amount. If we want to go over that amount for any reason, you would need sixty percent of the vote, of the uh, budget vote. Um, we'll have our recommendation probably at the next meeting, once we review and get more final numbers, but I just wanted to show you what the actual tax rate, because it does, there's a lot of things that are out of your control when you calculate, after you calculate the tax levy, based on uh, valuation of a home. So, and the equalization rate that's set by the counties and the state. So, but this just shows you what the historical for the last five years of the actual tax rate and what it means if you had a house assessed at a hundred thousand dollars in the city, we're in the town of O'Rourke and that we assess taxes. So as you can see, like for the city of Schenectady, in seventeen eighteen, a hundred thousand dollar house assessed for just school taxes was two thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Over the last five years, that has dropped to two thousand and thirty-five dollars. That's pretty good, you know, considering everybody says how much taxes have gone up, our school taxes have actually gone down and we have actually supported more programs and our cost to the district has actually gone up.
I mean, that was intentional on the part of the board.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So it was the support of. Yeah, that's what I mean. So it was the support of the board to keep the taxes low and get the necessary funding from the school, I mean, from the state, state aid. So being mindful and being fiscally responsible is definitely paying off. As you can see, the historical tax rate and the amount that people are actually paying per $100,000.
Yeah, the, I mean, the biggest thing for Terry is that, you know, you guys have to champion and tell that story, because I don't think people realize that the board has been really prudent on that.
We tell them.
I mean, that's a $400 decrease in four years. I mean, that's pretty significant. When you think of it compared to a large number of other communities, so.
Well, I think it was also because the community, the board, the community, the school community really pushed for funding.
Yep.
And so we were able to make those choices, not to raise taxes on our taxpayers.
And we were trying to become more equal with surrounding, surrounding districts in terms of the tax levy per thousand, because that makes a difference in terms of.
And we'll be very mindful when we set the 2223. And I just wanted to show you kind of how that kind of equates. I think, you know, although the total votes is low or very low, considering the number of tax parcels that we have in the district, but you can see the support that the district is actually receiving when they vote for the budget. So I think this, again, as you mentioned about the tax rate, this kind of shows you why, how they are supporting what you're doing. So that's a good thing to see also. The 2021 was obviously mid-COVID. Every district in the area throughout New York State saw a larger number of votes, you know, but 1,400 votes last year.
It's unfortunate that New York State didn't recognize how it increased accessibility for voters to have a mail-in so that we could continue that.
True. If they support the cost. And then moving forward, state aid, the tax levy, I'll obviously file that by March 1st and then provide you after that. We don't have to, although we're providing the number, we don't have to set the levy. So we have time to do that till we determine what.
We do the levy usually the second meeting in July.
Okay.
After the agreements and procedures.
Yep, so we'll be prepared for that, like what we can do and what we will do. And then March 16th, we're going to go over, you know, the majority of the budget, the instructional, the student support services, the employee benefits, and the debt service. Any questions?
Do we have a session on grants particularly that we're talking about? And what I'm thinking of most directly related to this general support is the, where we stand with regard to the budget or the proposition that was passed several years ago in relation to internet and, and all of the.
Smart School Bonds?
I'm sorry.
Smart School Bonds?
Smart Schools, yeah, that's one.
Yeah, a lot of that expenditure that's included in that would be like a capital fund. So basically, it's not part of your general fund budget. But we can, if that's what your request is, we can look at all the grants that we talked about previously with the different, not only the COVID-related grants, but also where we stand with the smart school bonds. Part of our budget presentation, once we get to the final point with the budget booklet, we're going to show the allocation of where our expenditures are actually coming from. So what's being supported by the general fund, what's being supported by smart school bonds, and what will be supported by the grants. So we'll be able to identify by building who's on what, if we were paying for FTEs, whatever services out of the, say, a grant, it'll show the total general fund allocation and which we are voting on, a total part of the general fund budget. But you also see other parts of the building expenditures that are getting covered by grants or the other state aid that's not included, like capital projects.
The smart schools bond, I guess an update would be appropriate. There was so much difficulty getting the money paid by all school districts across.
Yeah, there's definitely a delay from the state, especially during COVID. I know my old district, we submitted like in November, we didn't get to like the following December, like a year and a month. We just are actually currently identifying what we expended in the smart school bond. I'm going over with the Director of Technology right now, looking at what we expended, and then we're going to submit the, for the reimbursement. Unfortunately, you have to front the money upfront, and then they will reimburse you after you do that.
And I'm not sure whether the Chromebooks that we purchased and things like that.
They were originally identified as a Smart School Bond Act funding, but we end up doing that out of the CARES money. So that was transferred over, so we freed up some money of the smart school bond.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious, we had about $9 million in.
Yeah, we have quite a bit. We're looking at.
How much we've spent.
We've heard a lot of, you know, not to give away too much, but what we're looking at is, one of the things we identified real quick was the infrastructure again. And we bought all these new access points, but the CAT cable, and speaking terminology, I don't really understand, but the CAT 5, but you should really be supporting those with CAT 6 cable. So we're going to be looking at the infrastructure, make sure the connectivity throughout the buildings is what it should be, and then the one-to-one devices.
So Terry, when we do the 16th, we probably should add another bullet, just do grants, give them the overview of all the, all the funding grant sources we have.
Yep. Yeah. We did, we did a preliminary of like the COVID and the other ones, but what other available funds are out there for us, we could definitely identify those, which would be the smart school bond and how much that is.
Yeah, okay. Something else that just occurred to me.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so when we were looking at the slides about the, the maintenance custodians and cleaners, looking at the acres of our school districts, is that including not just the actual building space inside, but the walkways, parking lots?
Yes, outside, basically the fields, everything, anything, all our property.
And, and given that we've been understaffed for some time now for a number of those positions, are we feeling really comfortable that the 114 is going to allow us to cover all of that space? To make sure that we can keep our school safe and clean and, and all of that stuff?
What we did was, we used kind of industry standard based on certain amount of square footage. You should have a certain amount of individual employees, and Terry can talk more about that. So we use that as the baseline to try to get our staffing back. And so it'll get us above where we were two years ago to the point. And when they do the building condition service, they tell you how many custodian you should have for how many square foot inside and then also outside. So we're trying to get to that level of standard, which is where we get that 114 number from.
Is there any opportunity to ask the building staff? Like, how much time does it take you if this is the space that you're covering?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, that's the process, speaking with the directors. And then my intention is to also get like the custodials, all the heads custodians in a room. What, what do they need to make them more efficient to do their job and more productive besides more staff? So get them the necessary materials and equipment to assist them with that. I just know like you mentioned the grounds and acres. We only had like a, like two or three, and today there was a posting that went out to get more groundskeeper, like three or four more to hire to maintain the outside of the buildings in addition to the additional cleaners and custodials that we're looking for.
Yeah, so part of Terry's process is that he met with the directors, when in this case it'd be like Brian Hoffman and Mike Berry. Then he'll go and meet with the head of custodians, people actually at the building level. And some of the things that they may recommend is like floor scrubbers. You know, they may need more floor scrubbers, so they don't, you know, so some of it'll be not just people, but it'll be like the equipment that we have lacked on. So that's our hope.
I appreciate that leadership within that division will be asked, but also, is there an opportunity to talk to those individuals that work underneath them? Because sometimes you, you might get a different answer.
Yeah, so that's what Terry's doing as he goes to the buildings. He meets with, like, for example, for us, we don't, we're not telling Terry what to do for the schools. He's meeting with the principals and getting, same thing with the O&M division. He'll meet with the building level people as well.
Okay.
But I think the other thing too is like, we, there are some industry standards that we are not even close to, so we're trying to get to those industry standards as well that, you know, there's a lot of research around acreage and square footage, you need this many people, should take them this long, you know, that kind of stuff. So I think, you know, there's tons of improvement there. And I think if we can get the 114 people fully staffed, I think we should see noticeably. But to what Terry said today, we had HVAC postings today, we had grounds crew people posted today. So we are actively doing it now, even though the budget hasn't started for next year. We're trying to get the bodies now, because everyone's fighting, fighting for the same workforce, which is, I think, the tougher conversation we got to have.
When it comes to transportation, have we ever looked at the attendance based on the time of year? And how many students are not coming into school because of weather, right? Is there any trend that we could see that shows like during the months of, from November to March, that we have a decrease in attendance? And potentially looking at, should we extend for part of the year our busing? Is, is that even an option? Is it viable if, depending on what it looks like, right? And then I, I was excited to see that there was so much coverage, including sports and extracurricular and, and things like that. Is there a cap, though? Is it that every after-school program is covered, that all sports for all of their away games are covered? And how late is after-school?
Yeah, so great questions. I don't know all the times that everything finishes, but if it's a school-run program for after-school, we provide the transportation by far and large, make sure there's kids, you know, the whole equity conversation, access, getting kids home. You know, so I can't tell you exactly which ends, you know, what time, what. Some of our athletics go extremely late. Most of our after-school programs, I would probably say five to six at the latest that would be done. That, to your earlier point around distance and, and attendance patterns, you know, I know when I was a kid, when it got cold, there were some days, I'm not going outside, mom, you know what I mean? Even if though the bus drop, the bus stop is only down the block or sometimes even in front of my house, right? It just didn't feel like it. But I think it would be too hard for us as an organization to be that fluid, because the routes get set and then so many drivers, and then these are contracted services, so they have to put them out for bid. It would be just too hard for us to have that fluidity. If we had our own fleet, maybe, but that's also has another burden, another level of cost. So what I think the, probably more, and you guys who've been on the board longer, is these attendance zones were set up to try to maybe limit some of the number of kids on buses by what schools are in their communities. The bigger, the tougher pieces, we get a lot of hardship requests where a sibling's over here, they move in, but they happen to have to move, they want to still keep their child over there. We want to honor that, we've still got to transport that kid. So I think the system has done a lot to be responsive to families' needs and not allowing transportation to be a reason why a kid can't get somewhere. But some of that does add to our costs. Our special education, for one, for example, we do a ton of curb-to-curb. And some of that curb-to-curb is a bunch of vans, which is probably a really more expensive route, because they got to get into some of these apartment complexes to, to get the curb-to-curb. So, you know, we're spending $12 million, although 90 of it is reimbursable, but it's a significant amount. So, you know, I got to give my hat off to Al and Dr. Mason and those folks in the transportation. They do a ton of work to figure out solutions so that we can't, a family doesn't come to me. I've never gotten a complaint in my seven months here about not getting a bus. So, you know, there's credits to those guys.
As you're talking, it made me think about something else. As we continue to work with the city and, and grow that partnership, maybe there's a conversation about the, the access to sidewalks during that time, because it is definitely one of those barriers to children. Not just the cold, but the safety of walking to school, even if it is less than a mile. It's not always feasible, regardless of the age of the child. There are adults that can't walk on those sidewalks. So maybe there's an opportunity to have a conversation and see, how can we make sure that our streets are clear, whether it's the sidewalks or, or whatever, so that children have an increased access to get to school?
Yeah, and I mean, we closed the school the other day, I did it the night before because I saw it already. The ice was starting to build up and.
Yeah.
Some of these hills are, no joke.
I lived on one.
My driveway is still the same way.
But, you know, I think you bring up another point, Board Member Miles, is that even our partnership with the CDT, you know, we, we want to try to expand that. We want to have, if we can get that whole high school for the most part on the CDT, that frees up other yellow buses to hopefully address some of the multiple runs that they're doing. And, and for me, it's the access piece. Kids on that CDT, they can go downtown, they can, they can jump on it and go if they have to go somewhere else for an appointment, job, I mean, to me, those are the, the cool things in that partnership.
Are we still working with TransFinder?
Yes, we still.
Yeah, they do all our routes, bus routes.
That's what I, I thought.
I just have one more.
Sure.
Um, for now. Under school climate and safety of the, the list of positions, I don't see social workers, guidance counselors, psychiatrists, where would they fall?
That falls under the student support services when we present the instructional. They're in the student support services budget and instructional, but I'm going to talk about them in my presenting a little bit about the CEO update. So you can see kind of the, the number of positions we have under that climate. But they're, they're, these individuals are considered operational generals, like in the general side, they're not considered the instructional side, you know, counselors.
These don't meet with individual students, whereas counselors meet with the students. These are not meeting with students directly, you know, their safety.
Okay.
That's how the.
They may have interaction, but it's not.
The funding sources are too different, but they're technically in the same wheels. I know what you're, I know what you're getting at.
Okay.
Go ahead. One quick question. I was wondering with the CDT, have we seen, or this may not even be a valid question, but are, have there been any financial gains in terms of our transportation budget that we saw here and us using CDT? Is there any correlation there?
So there's not necessarily financial gains. There, there was, they did it at a kind of a reduced rate. Where there has been is the ability to free up our yellow buses to do some of the other things like field trips, where we would have a really strained, especially with the pandemic. Some of these, and you can still see it in some of these communities, they don't have enough drivers. When we have a CDT, they have a different bidding process, they have a different workforce. So they have allowed us to maximize our, our yellow buses, you know, our brown, some of the other companies that we use to do the elementary and to do some of the supplemental stuff like special education and things of that nature. So the benefit for us is that it frees up the yellow buses to do some of the elementary, especially since we have two runs, we have two tiers with having all the campuses. Remember, we're 90% reimbursable, so cost-wise, we're cheaper a little bit, but not like significant savings by going with CDT.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen much change in the pilots? I suspect coming from the district you came from, you're surprised at the number of pilots we have.
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, there hasn't been much change. I know two of them are falling off that have been on there, but I know they're adding more. We received the report like yesterday or today, but we're still, you know, finalizing some of the numbers. They won't be finalized, I think, until June or July, but for our purposes of doing the tax levy, we'll have enough information.
When they put the property tax cap in back in 2014 or whatever it was, it, the, Schenectady was one of three districts in the state that had a negative tax cap.
Yeah.
Just a reference point.
Yep. Yeah, I think they're like around 3.7 is the pilot, off the top of my head.
Okay. I just want to say, I like your practice of going to the different buildings to get input from those buildings. It, it shows that, you know, we're looking at equity and trying to be fair and, and everyone has a voice. But I'd also like the parents who are listening to tell their students they can fill out the budget survey.
Absolutely, yeah, parents, students.
It ends on the 25th next week, you guys are going to be on break. So you have free time to just fill it out. If you want your voice to be heard, now's the time.
Yeah, and thanks to the principals, they've been very open, allowing me to come in, understanding new practice. They've been great. This is all new to them too, so, you know, they're, they're teaching their staff how to do it. So it's definitely going to be a learning process, but it's been very so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
All right, next we have a knee ball on the community engagement officer. That's the CEO update. I'm used to having CEOs stand for something else.
So thank you, board members. I'm going to just take my mask off since I'm far enough away and you can hear me better. Chief Clifford, you want to join me up here, CEOs? So I'm going to provide you an update on a pilot program that we started four months ago. I came to the board and asked for your permission to basically say, hey, I want to engage with Schenectady Police Department. Chief Clifford and I had met to think of a different way to approach it. The city had to write a reform plan as part of the governor at the time, Governor Cuomo's initiative as a result of the George Floyd situation in Minneapolis. You know, the governor here, Cuomo, had forced every, every police department to put together a plan that addressed some things that were systemic. And I saw it as an opportunity to kind of redefine our work here. You guys can sit until I fly up. And so I'm going to share you guys an update. I also wanted to approach this a little bit more holistically, where it just wasn't about the police, but also about other things we're doing. Again, when Bossy's presented kind of the new org chart, one of the things that was identified was someone who would focus on climate, safety, and security in our school system, and that we had kind of a liaison. And so Jeff has been a fantastic addition to our team, extremely responsive to schools. He works in partnership with SPD and the officers at the schools and our principals and everyone. He's kind of our frontline responder within the system, so to take you through here. So as usual, our district vision.
So, as usual, our district vision, this biggest thing for me here is the partnership piece. You know, one of our major pillars is partnerships with not only families, but with also the community, that means community-based organizations, agencies like the fire department, the police department, Schenectady County, and so, you know, this is grounded in our work as a system. I would be remorced if I did not also take a moment to recognize some of the things that are going on in the news that are real, maybe you see them, maybe you don't. One of them just happened recently, pretty close by, Green Island just went remote this whole week due to violence in the school building. I don't know much about that community, I didn't really spend too much time, but what I saw was the headline of a school district pivoting to remote, and conversations around, what are they doing to support kids, not only with counselors, social workers, but also their relationship with the local law enforcement, and how can they work together on some of these issues that sometimes manifest outside the building and come into the building. Poughkeepsie, another community not very far from us here, if you didn't know, being from Buffalo, just earlier, last, at the end of last week, they had a school shooting right on school property, and a young man was stabbed multiple times, at least 10 times, in a fight outside a school in the parking lot. And so, we even came out in the news, and I wanted to remind you guys that in October, we had some upticks and challenges here at our high school campus early on in the school year. And so, I think one thing that as educators, we are always focused on teaching and learning, but for one thing, and this kind of goes point to kind of Board Member Miles's question, or to say, where are they? We're doing this holistically, whole child, whole organization, and looking at different places where we can input, where we can increase, and so, we're addressing what we call Maslow's hierarchy of needs, approved positions, restorative practice specialist positions. I think we're almost up to five, Andrea, is that correct? So, that is new, brand new, that you guys have approved already, we've had some of them come through the various board packets, that is new to Schenectady, it did not exist. We would use sometimes outside agencies like mediation matters, but now we're building capacity internally to also augment the relationship with mediation matters, so that's new, five restorative practice specialists assigned to multiple schools. And then obviously, increasing school safety personnel and equipment, I'll go a little bit further into this in a couple of the slides. These, some of these positions were not in the budget at all, historically, school safety monitors, school safety officers, and we've started to bring some of that back to assist with some of the work in our climate culture in the building. And then, obviously, we're piloting the CEO program that we've been doing for the last four months. This next slide talks about a career pathway, so, again, part of our work is, again, multifaceted, multi-pronged, we have a commitment here to try to grow our own in Schenectady, focus on DEI. That picture in the top left is the most current group of individuals that we've brought on, I believe it's about 10 individuals that we've brought on, that look like our community, that come from our community, that have graduated here, they got their red school safety officer uniforms and their pants, they did two weeks of training, this is very new, two weeks of intensive training at Mount Pleasant, they had circle therapeutic crisis intervention, they had 20 different individuals come in, give them different perspectives around expectations, interactions, and all of it was grounded on relationships, all of it. Because we know at the end of the day, we're not asking them to come in there and be a heavy, we're asking them to come in there, build relationships with kids, let them understand expectations, but when something does go bad, and we have a lockdown, the day, you become the first responder in the building. You let teachers teach, and you, and you become that kind of, you know, guardian angel in the hallway of making sure the environment's safe, making sure there's no outsiders coming in, when kids dismiss, they have enough supervision to make sure that it's a safe dismissal. And so I wanted to show you here that we've created a pathway, oops, I'm sorry, a pathway that starts from a hall monitor in a para, which we have, okay, and it talks about the entry level of the positions, that moves into a culture and community engagement specialist, okay? Talks about what training's required, and this is the work that Jeff Russo has done in a short amount of time here, to put this together, this pathway, so people can move up, and there's opportunities to earn more money in the system, and there's also opportunities for them to have different credentials, to do different layers of work. And then in the bottom right corner is a picture of them in a circle, as one of the many circles they held with various staff. And so, again, four months ago, we started this partnership, and for me, it's, we're really one community, we're one Schenectady, whether we realize it or not, we may have different silos, but whatever I do impacts the work of the police department, whatever I do impacts the mayor, and so, I wanted to make sure we had a strong relationship. And so when I met with chief, the chief gave me this, he said, "Look, this is right in our reform plan, this community engagement officer concept, we want to retrain, we want to do this differently, I have work to do with the community, I have to reinvest building relationships, I got to train them differently", and so these are the things that we agreed upon that our CEOs would do. And they've been fantastic, they've been in the buildings, and these are our current CEOs, I took some pretty cool pictures, I thought, they did some articles on them, they're kind of our guardians of, in the hallways, and they're here to protect our kids, super responsive to our parents. You know, it's a game changer when a parent's like, "Hey, I want to talk to the police", well, hey, they're right here, or wait five minutes and we're going to come right over from the high school. And oftentimes, if we know about things early enough, we can get them to meet with families right at the schoolhouse, versus them having to go home, maybe be irate, maybe wanting to call 911 on something, they're able to respond. And so, obviously, you all know Albert Rivera and Sergeant Lanier, Albert's an alumni of Schenectady, which, again, I think is real intentional and powerful for the work that we're trying to do here. So I want to show you what a day in the life looks like of one of our CEOs, so there's a little video, if you can bear with me, and maybe you see it on the screen behind, you guys want to hit that? In the center of Albert Rivera, there should be a little play button there.
Good morning, how are you? We go around in the morning and at least, you know, we want to interact with kids a little bit, so, but we definitely, that's the best way to interact, you know, with students, just by standing in the morning. Oh.
Hi there. That was a good one. Come on in. Come on in. Come out there. Where's the door at? All right. Yeah, I can't hear the door. Was that what happened? Get your way back next time. This is going in. No, I think, I think that's it. That's it. I like it, it's definitely, you know, a good kid, right? You interact with the kids, you get to know them, right? You build that bond, right? And we were gone, we were gone for a couple of weeks, right? The kids were asking, or were, been at the school, right? They were, they asked the principal a couple of times, they're like, oh, this is awesome, right? She got concerned, right? They've seen us for three, four months now, and they build that bond, so it's definitely, it's definitely important to keep that bond. I mean, they're not Nice kid, come on up, kid, you're right. What's that, calling us safely? No, not for that, because then you, you can't be everywhere at once.
And so I think, you know, what's intentional there is, there's nothing fancy going on, just building relationships with kids, being visible. You obviously heard one of the young men, I think there he is right there in the, in the video who spoke tonight. You know, and they were gone for a little bit, they got COVID, so they had to take a couple of times off, and the kids were like, "What happened to them?". And, you know, so COVID takes everybody out, even our, even our CEOs. And so, I wanted to share that with you, because it's nothing dynamic, but the fact that they're there when something does happen, we don't want them to be used, okay? That's not, that was never our intention, for them to be used, our intention was for them to be there as another layer of support. So, I had asked Principal Chank and Mr. Green, Principal Green, to do a survey of the students, and to kind of get an idea, obviously, we have about 2,600 students in the building, this went out to all of their Gmail accounts, this was in January, so this was a little earlier in the year, and these were the, kind of the responses, and 76% of them said they've never encountered them. To me, that's a good thing, because it wasn't the fact, I don't want all the, I don't want 100% of the kids to encounter the police, okay? Of the 388 that responded, this was some of the data that they shared. How do you feel about having them? Some of them didn't have an opinion at all, they could, you know, they didn't really share of the 388. Some of them were okay with it, some of them were not, okay? And so, I wanted to, just to show you that we did include some student voice, they met with student groups throughout the day, since they've been here, they've done various circles with kids, as part of our reset at the high school, they've been involved in a variety of that stuff. Based on your knowledge and experience with the community engagement officers, do you think they should remain? Some of them said, 54% said maybe, students, again, not sure. 33% said yes, and 11% said no. When we went to staff responses, have you ever encountered them? Again, some of them, 60% said yes, 40% said no. How do you feel about having them in the building? 77% were happy that they were here, 9% were okay with them being there, and 7%, and I think it was 3% or so that was not happy, or didn't have an opinion at all. It was only 71 responses, too, I want to point that out, we have over 100 staff members as well. How many total staff members at the high school, Chank? Oh, never mind, 300, so a third of them responded, so. And then, again, based on your knowledge, would you want them to continue to remain here by the, at the end of the pilot? And there was an overwhelming yes of 76%. Again, not all of them, not every staff member. Family responses as well, much more smaller sample, 45%. 70, 71% said they were aware of the pilot program. Again, 53% of them were happy with, that they were there, 22% were okay with them being there, again, these are only 45 responding, so I always want to be mindful of scale and total number versus percentage. And then based on your knowledge or experience, do you think they should remain? Of the 45, 73% said yes. And then, you know, quantitative data is important, but sometimes qualitative data is also equally important, and so we received this just the other day. Ms. Edith Johnson, anybody know Ms. Edith Johnson? She works the front desk, I think, with the guys in the morning, and she just sent us this note, she sent it to Mr. Russo, just to kind of say, "Hey, look, I didn't think it was going to work out, these guys are great, they joke with kids, they like to talk about donuts", as you heard it, I think, in the video, there was a donut joke, or "Bring me Dunkin' Donuts" or something, I think Albert's always looking for some free food. And, you know, I think the biggest thing for her is that they love having them there, because they're working alongside some of our support staff on simple things like signing kids into the building, okay? They could easily be in an office and just, you know, wait till something, you know, called, but they, they have chosen not, and we have been deliberate on the manner of this approach in the CEOs. I also think it's important for the leaders of the building to maybe share with the board around how the pilot's going, so I'm going to invite the principals' voice up, Executive Principal Chank and Mr. Green, if you want to join us.
Thank you. Usually when I talk about this photo, it's usually, I mentioned that it's an optical illusion, but he's here, so you're probably going to see that it's not. You know, Mr. Green and I do thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the community engagement officer pilot program. The introduction of the officers to Schenectady High School was actually part of a larger conversation that we had, it incurred in meetings like this, it occurred in faculty meetings, but also in our classrooms, as well as in student circles, some that were held with the officers, and some that were held without the officers, as everyone in our school kind of debated the role of police within the school. The CEOs during the pilot program have been a very visible presence in our building, though on a different level than you might think. Their lack of more official uniform has allowed students and adults to freely exchange in conversation and relationship building, you certainly saw that in the video, without a sometimes intimidating barrier. Our CEOs have quickly become part of our Schenectady High School family, attending sporting events, as, as our students said, and extracurricular events, and being at the E-Wing, you saw that as well in the video, and then, of course, in the hallways during the day. They've attended trainings put on by the school district and emphasized the importance of being in line with our district's values and philosophies. Now, when an issue does come up, the CEOs will let our Schenectady High School administrative team take the lead and support the district's code of conduct. They can always be counted on to provide consultation, advice, and further assessment of a situation, but they work hard not to muddy the line between the role, their role, and the role of a school administrator, administrator or school teacher. Sergeant Lanier and Officer Rivera's primary role during the pilot program has been to help people, that's what we've witnessed. They assist with the signing in of students, they assist in working directly with families, including translations with our nurses and our counselors, they have assisted in sometimes difficult and emotional situations during which something may have been lost, or something went wrong. In short, you know, we are in support of the community engagement program here at Schenectady High School. Dennis, you want to?
Thank you, Chris.
John, this, I get a little nervous, too. Yeah, so, I certainly had reservations, I'm not going to lie. I'm a big community person, I'm a big advocate of children, and I've seen our history, and I had some reservations, but I also know that safety is at the forefront in this day and age. And when, when these gentlemen came on board, and I saw that they looked like our children, and the conversations that I held with them, I knew that they would be the right fit. I can't personally say that's going to be for everyone that comes across, but these two gentlemen, the engagement they've had with the students is evident, not just by me seeing it, but by, but by me hearing it. Two quick stories, young man walks up to Sergeant Lanier, "I know you", and I'm like, "Oh, boy", he's, it's going to be a negative thing. And Lanier's like, "Yeah, so, what, you know, what do you do?", and the kid's like, "You look like my landlord", and Sergeant Lanier's like, "Well, I own some property", and he goes, "Where do you live?". And the student says, and he goes, "Well, I am your landlord", and the bond that they had right there was amazing. And then, when, when, speaking my young man here, who, who is just friendly to everyone and has a great personality, and the bond that, that he has built with other students, with these two gentlemen, has, have been amazing. And then I think about the career pathways and, and the redesign of the high school, right? And I think about change in community and systems, such as the police department, and I believe in order to make a change in anything, it starts with the community. And the more community members, the more young people that we inspire and empower to become firemen, EMTs, and police officers, then we grow our own in all areas of the community. For instance, Officer Rivera, Schenectady High School graduate, community member, now a police officer for the Schenectady City District, or for the Schenectady City Police Department. So I believe that they are single-handedly empowering and inspiring some students. Now I recognize that we have trauma in our history in America with, with police officers, right? Can't sit up here and deny that. But in order to make change, we have to start somewhere. And, again, I can't speak for everyone, but these two gentlemen have been an inspiration for some of our students, and I've enjoyed having them here, they have been a part of the school, and when they are not here, it is noticeable. Students do comment, when they were both out, and I didn't know we can disclose for COVID, but they were out. They still took our calls, and when I called Rivera up, he's like, "Yeah, I'm sick", and I'm like, "Oh, my God, I'm sorry", he goes, "No, let me know what you need, I'll call so-and-so", right? And it's not even responding to things in the building, it is all hours, days off, weekends, anytime we have needed something, they've always been on the phone. So I have a great deal of respect for them, and I, I would, I, I would be lying to say if I didn't miss them if they weren't in this building, right? And I would be lying to say that I would be nervous to have anyone else come in this building that I don't know as much as I know them now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Principal Green and Principal Chank. So I, you know, I just think it's important, because I'm not here every day in the building, those two gentlemen are here, we've charged them with a heavy lift, and, you know, I just wanted you to know that where they view both, not only Sergeant Lanier and Officer Rivera, but the relationship and the goal with this program, you know, they're not allowed to call them and say when, you know, have them come and suspend the kid, that's not what they're allowed to do, but, you know, there's a story that, that, you know, we're trying to tell here that's just different than a traditional school resource officer, so I, I wanted just to kind of point out some things that So I, I wanted just to kind of point out some things that I had, again, Jeff Russo put together some stuff. If we were to follow the traditional school resource officer, this is from the National School Resource Officer Network or something, they would recommend in their design, one to every thousand, and, and we're not, we're not going that route, one officer for every thousand kids. But I wanted to show you what the industry standard or what that motto is. And, you know, there's always conversations around contributions to the school prison pipeline. You know? There's no definitive evidence that a cop in a school is, is, is going to lead someone down that road. And so I wanted to be clear, like, I couldn't, I could find anecdotal stories, I can find some, you know, somebody's here, but I also can find a counter-research document over here. Typically, that conversation is only in urban communities, it's never studied in suburban, rural communities where they always have either a sheriff or a school resource officer, and, and so I, I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. What I think is more important around this conversation is that carefully selected officers, excuse me, selected officers, specially trained officers, typically mitigate that. And that's what we've done here, what Chief Clifford has done here. He has been real intentional around who we bring in, the training we're going to subject them to, and making sure that the school district has a part of that selection process. And obviously, he's got unions and things to work with through as well, but to make sure that we're a part of this, this is done collaboratively. Because you know what? I wish they were gremlins and we can throw water on them and they would just start multiplying. But we don't know if there's a lot of other Officer Riveras and Sergeant Laniers out there, so we have to be real careful in this process. And so, moving forward, this is what my ask of the board. And again, you don't have a resolution to vote tonight, but I do would like some feedback and direction on what I should do. Because the pilot does have to end at some point, and either these officers need to leave and go back out on the road, or we need to make somewhat of an investment with the Schenectady Police Department. And so, I'm asking your permission to work on an agreement with the Schenectady Police Department and the city of Schenectady for community engagement officers in our district for potentially either a three-to-four-year type of agreement. Obviously, we could walk away at any time within the three to four years if something were to happen. We always put language to protect both organizations that allows us to leave. But this would be the plan. We would have one in each of our middle schools that would support the elementaries in their zone, by their attendance zone. So one at Mount Pleasant, one at Central Park, and one at Anita that would support their elementary feeder patterns. So if there's a call at Zoller, the officer at Anita would go over to Zoller and support Zoller, things of that nature. We would continue with two CEOs at the high school, and this is the, the big plan. So this is like, you know, it's going to take us a couple of years to get here, I think, but I would like to be honest and tell you the vision. I'd also would like to have one CEO kind of supervisor of these officers, because I don't have necessarily any direct authority of them, but the sergeant would, and in this case, it would be potentially Sergeant Lanier, would evaluate them, hold them accountable. But it would also float between our adult education campus and our Stymens Career Leadership Academy. Looking at something that's a little different here, would be an investment of about three hundred thousand dollars yearly. And just to do the math here, if you did the math, it's six officers for about three hundred thousand. That's, would be cheaper than if we bought six counselors. So I just want you to know that. Six counselors would be about six hundred thousand dollars, you know, on average, with benefits, salary, things of that nature. So again, I know Officer, or sorry, Chief Clifford has been real strategic with me and making sure that there's some shared investment in costs. Typically, it costs a hundred thousand dollars, right, Chief Clifford, for a police officer? So they're putting some skin in the game to bring this at a reduced cost with the mayor and figure out what that price point is. My ask of the board is that I could work on something, bring something back to the board to consider for vote in March of 2022. I also wanted to point out that a three hundred thousand dollar investment is point one-four of our total budget, less than a percent, for what I feel is extremely important when we talk about another layer to ensure safety and the overall well-being of our school campuses, both our students, staff, and any community that tries to enter in and engage inappropriately. And last but not least, these officers won't prevent something from happening, but they'll try their best to make sure that if something does happen, that we're responding quickly, efficiently, and appropriately. Because I can't tell you that nothing's not going to happen, but I go to sleep knowing that we have another layer. I go to sleep going better, knowing that we have another layer to support our kids, our staff, and supporting Chief's vision on trying to redefine kind of officers versus the old model. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have for myself, Chief. We have the two CEOs here, so I'll open it up, yep.
Any questions?
Sure, I'm just curious, because we've heard from many people, and I've heard this at other places too, what a great job these two officers do, but how would we ensure that the other officers potentially hired had that same commitment and that same connection with our students?
I'll let Chief answer that because he'll help with the selection process on additional officers.
Yeah, that's, that, that's going to be on me and my, my command staff to make sure that. We've had some conversations leading up to this point with the superintendent's predecessor about bringing on some version of this. And the officers who put in for it, I wasn't happy with, so we just abandoned it. So I'm not going to allow that to happen as long as I'm the chief. And, you know, my command staff stands with me on that, whoever my replacement is someday. You know, we're, you know, I, I, like Mr. Green, you know, was a little bit unsure on this also, but I know that's my job to keep this city safe, and this school district sits within the city. And we had to, we had to do it, we had to make, take a chance, and I have full confidence in these officers, sergeant and the officer, and I have full confidence in my staff, and if we're doing our job right, we shouldn't have to worry about what officer comes up next. Because we're going to be, we're going to be growing the police department in a manner that we're not worried about the officers. The current, the officers that are currently there, I didn't hire all of them, so, but, so, you know, ten years down the road, I probably won't be here. But I have confidence every officer we're bringing on and training are going to fit this model right here. We're, we're working on the gremlins right now.
And I, and I think the earlier piece is that if it doesn't work, we walk away. And I want to be clear that both sides know that, if it's not going to work out, we don't have the right officers. But I would not want to go in there with the fear of that. I would want to go in there with, what's the training that's going to be required? What's the job description? Because one thing that Chief had shared with me, some guys just said, no, this isn't for me, and decided not to, when he was originally talking about it. These two guys just happened to step up, but, you know, Officer Rivera's a young guy, he's not even the most senior, right? Technically couldn't, he couldn't have bid it, he could have, whatever their terminology is, but he, but he volunteered to do it and no one else was interested. And so sometimes these things work out, but I just don't want to operate from a stance of fear, because if we did, then we, we would just not be willing to even try.
There's a couple of things. You mentioned the, the training that officers will receive or have received. What access do we have to review those trainings to ensure that they lead with an anti-racism model that isn't just about bias, but actually is progressive and speaks about system structures and the historical narrative that we're fighting against?
We've already started sending our officers, these two officers, and we bid it within the police department for possibly the future officers that want to replace them to participate in some of the training that's already been put on by the school district, the crisis intervention training. Most recently, last week, we held a procedural justice implicit bias training, which we invited members of, of our community, leaders in our community, city council, leaders of certain organizations to come and sit in on. So we're, we're beginning that transparency phase of, come see what we're training, give us feedback so that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community. So that, that's my commitment moving forward, that the trainings that they will receive and others will fit that model of making sure that the, the training that we're providing meets the standards that you're asking for.
Some of the other ones that Chief had shared with me earlier that they do do is the community health training, homelessness, harm reduction. Obviously, the anti-racism is fairly new for the police department. We do some stuff with our staff, they are always invited, they've come to some of them already. There's also the Dare School component, right, that would be kind of required for them to participate in. And I think this is something we're going to have to continue to grow on, making sure that when we do orientation for our school safety officers, that they're included in any of the new police officers, and I think they did participate with our, our new school safety officers most recently. If I remember correctly, Chief, you were also engaging, I think, City Councilman Farley on some conversations around, you know, who's out there that does this work well, to bring them in and train the officers. And I think you've mentioned SUNY Schenectady, the professor over there for the justice, what's his name?
Well, I've been working with Dr. Mono and Dr. Shabazz on putting together a program. And, and we're going to pull together a little small collaborative that's going to include Councilman Farley so that we can, we can see if we can build our own homegrown program that works best for this community, rather than bring somebody in from out of town to train it. And if, you know, if, if, if the collaborative group doesn't like what they see, then we'll, we'll go with the professional from out of town. But that, that's the, that's the, that's what we're working on right now.
The implicit bias training that community members were invited to observe and give feedback on, will we and the larger community then know what that feedback was and how they viewed the training?
Yes, and at some point, we may hold a larger training session for the community to see. So my, my vision would be possibly we hold it in this room here and invite as many people here to see what we're training on procedural justice. There's three pieces of it, the implicit bias is only one piece of it. And then, as we roll out other trainings, we will also consider that if we want to put those out to the community.
I, I would definitely like to say to you, I would love an invitation, if there's an opportunity as a trained facilitator in anti-racism and the work that has happened in this community around policing, I would very much like an opportunity to be a part of those.
Okay, thank you.
What is the relationship between the school safety officers and the whole hierarchy of the grow your own and, and the CEOs? What, what has, have we had a relationship at this point with the, the number that we've brought on? And what do you see going forward?
For President Lewis, this is new. We, this school safety office is brand new, we are, got them on board, did the training. They're starting after, after the break, right, they go into the building, they're going to be at the high school, so they'll be working alongside these guys. And again, I view them as the layer before the CEOs, right? So the school safety officers, some of them have some correctional experience, some of them have some prior military, some of them are safety monitors and are moving up in the system. But the hope is that if we do this well enough, they're taking police tests, they may be our community police officers down the road. So, I mean, I'm assuming you were always looking for some good recruits, so that would be the hope.
I was going to be fully transparent and say that I'm going to try to recruit them all.
These are our employees and the, and the CEOs are the, are the chiefs, the chiefs employees.
And I know one at least up there is a former student of Schenectady as well.
I, I find it interesting, I find it interesting that we spent close to a decade of removing positions around policing, whether they were safety resource officers or those individuals that were in a more controlling environment and supervisory of our hallways, that we're now adding it back in when we found success in focusing more time and energy on prevention, which I see that prevention side is still there and that we are looking at the school counselors and psychiatrists. But while there may not be data that you could find that shows police cause harm inside schools, there is data that specifically shows there is an increase to safety and environment with the increase of school counselors and psychologists and guidance counselors. Our goal of having one counselor for, what is it, two hundred and fifty students? When you say school counselor, you mean guidance counselor, right?
Yeah, we don't, we don't say that.
Right, right, and, and one of the reasons why is because our guidance counselors no longer just do the schedule for our students and that it is not even feasible for them to do the schedule alone for hundreds of students inside a year. And they're already faced with, our students come to them for other needs, and they are having that additional one-on-one time, which is super important. So I would challenge us to actually even try to get that number lower, as well as increasing the other staff, because if we are able to engage with more students in a preventative measure, then, right? The goal is that we don't want officers in, engaging with our students as much as possible. So how can we ensure that our staff have numbers that are more manageable, that allow them, that engagement to identify warning signs? That if they see something happening, they have the time to address it with our student? And I, I guess, you've mentioned a couple of times them being available to react if necessary. How many times have they had to react?
I would say, you guys might start on here. How often had you had to react to something that?
That required police?
I'd say two to three times a day.
That needed police, that it was a, it, it was something that?
Usually it's a parent who wants to speak to a cop, a weapon is found on a student, and they have to get involved later, you know, with the confiscation of a weapon, or it's something outside the building, and it's not necessarily at the high school. So remember, there's two guys that serve a seat in seventeen campuses. So sometimes we have, you know, something as simple as the situation happened the other day, I reported about the woman who broke in the bus. You know, they had to respond to it, and so, there's a variety of things. Sometimes there are verbal threats, sometimes there are things of that nature. So we aren't the experts in some of those areas, so we kind of rely on some of that. But two to three times a day, when I can tell you, Principal Green and Principal Chank, I respond to usually forty or fifty type of things with students in hallways, with various different interactions over the course of the day. When they get to their point, it's something that they feel is above and beyond their expenses. Did you get in a motor vehicle accident?
When, when a weapon is found, is it just that the weapon is found, or you're talking that there is some engagement with students?
There's no, they haven't arrested anyone for anything, and if that's what you're trying to get a better understanding of. It's usually like, hey, weapon was brought in, we give it to them, see if it's a scar, or get them involved, or a parent wants to have a conversation with them about something, whether it was a threat made, they said they had a weapon in the house. These individuals have to go out to the house and do the check, and do the safety check. So those are the types of things where they get involved. We don't have that capacity, and so, I don't know if that helps understand.
It, it does. I, I guess my follow-up question is, but we don't believe that officers outside the building would have the same response time if we made that call? Because if, if it's that a child has a weapon, not that they're engaged with, with a weapon, so it's not, you know, there's an immediate threat. It is definitely serious, and we want to ensure that nothing does occur. But is the, you know, that we don't have police that can respond outside the building to come into those things? Versus something that is a immediate, such as the situation with the woman and the bus? That was very much a different level. I'm looking for, do they need to be inside the building versus outside? And it also goes to the reinvention and changing the, what policing looks like in Schenectady? And, you know, how does that coordinate to ensure that the officers are able to respond to those things as opposed to some of the mental health needs, and I know there's been progress around that?
Yeah, I, I would just say, and Chief, you can jump in around response time outside of the school building calls. They have helped decline some of those calls that we, we were getting from the community, because they're kind of within proximity. They're able to say, hey, we'll respond to this, not just, I mean, they have their regular radio with them as well, so they hear other things as well. For, for us, it has alleviated us having to call Schenectady Police Department and have a wait time, because they could be, you know, doing a patrol stop, doing something else. And I, I don't want to speak for the chief how many officers are on duty, but having them within our system says, you know, if Jeff gets a call, there's a student at Anita that needs a situation, one of these guys jumps in their car, goes right over to Anita. It doesn't have to go in the air, it has, it doesn't have to be a nine-one-one call, we can get the call internally. And so I think, to me, I like that level of responsiveness personally, because I know where they are every day. They're in one of our campuses, when they're out on the street, I don't know what they're encountering. And so maybe you could speak to that, Chief, in terms of your staffing and how you guys do that.
Yeah, post-COVID, it's, it's a lot different than it used to be. I lost ten percent of my patrol division to budget cuts because of COVID. We're still trying to get back up to where we were. So to not have these officers in the school, a call will be made to dispatch, and it would be dispatched. and it would be dispatched in accordance to their policies on priorities. Um, it's very possible for a high priority call, you might be getting a call, a, a car responding from Bellevue. If it's, it's a very high priority, you might get a, a car to respond from Niskiuna. It's not even a police department from this, from this community. And, and I think that what's most important, and the officers can respond or can maybe follow up on this. But what's important is that if the police are called, that the officers are familiar with the students. So they know and they can better handle them because they know the students. As opposed to an officer who might be working an overtime shift that normally works midnights, maybe has two years on the job. And they're just gonna go there and use very little discretion. They're just gonna do the job and leave. Where if Officer Rivera, Sergeant Lignier, they know the student, they know the parents, they might make a phone call and resolve it in a manner that most likely the school district would be happy with.
Yeah, and I wanna, this is probably a, uh, I'm gonna be real sensitive here, but I wanna share. Today, we had a, uh, an individual share something happened in their house, very personal. We didn't have to call nine-one-one. We literally called these guys over and it is, it was a serious police matter. But because the young lady was able to confide in, in someone in the school system, we were able to get there to support. They are now be able to ever follow it and it is, uh, of a high level of a criminal, uh, matter. That we were able to do that without, uh, the fanfare of, hey, we have to call, you're gonna have to wait for someone to come in, someone who didn't have a relationship with her or, uh, with our district. Um, and so I, I just, we encounter these things. Um, they're really hard unless I had a dedicated person to track everything, the amount of interactions. They respond to things that they avoid. Sometimes they're just, a, a kid hits another staff member's car in the parking lot accidentally. Where it doesn't have to be a big scene, we could figure it out. They can, they can talk. I mean, I think we've had some similar situations unfortunately happen like that. And so I, I think that's important. Um, but I, but I am, uh, equally aware that sometimes not every officer is gonna be these two guys. And what I would rather have is that officers that work with our kids, that go to all, they go to most of all their after basketball games. They're in the crowd, they participated in the, um, staffer-student basketball game with them. I mean, they have been real intentional. And that's the goal with all the CEOs, is that they don't just sit in an office wearing their uniform. That's why we didn't do the regular uniform, is that the whole point, uh, whole point for us is to try to reinvent this and make them be more a part of the school staff, um, but not be the first responder to a kid skipping in the hallway. Uh, you know, things like that. They can encourage kids, but we don't want them, if a kid doesn't go to class and we do happen to do like a hall check, I don't want them, you know, determining a consequence on a kid. That's what we have the administrators for. Uh, we have our code of conduct that's real clear on those things. So if they get to them, it's something that in our code of conduct is usually weapons, drugs, something of that high level that we need their input, feedback, or there's a claim of something outside the building or a parent's calling us who's super irate and wants to talk to an officer, doesn't wanna talk to us, wants to press charges. Uh, these guys talk a lot of people down and say, look, that's not the way to go. Pressing charge, let's figure this out a different way. Um, and hearing that from an officer is different than hearing that from school personnel. And so, you know, I, I don't think there's been anybody, we walked out of here in handcuffs since these guys have been here. So I wanna be clear, we've been real intentional that that's not the solution that we want, ever, if we can try to avoid it. But what we do want is when you do get there, to make sure that this is serious, uh, that we're gonna follow up and that there's that, that sense of security. Kathy?
I, I don't have any.
Oh, I thought you had a question, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no. Anybody else have a?
Yeah, I don't have questions, but I have a few comments. Um, I did wanna remind everyone, there are some YouTube videos actually about, um, I know it was Dennis or Mr. Green and Mr. Chank who had some circles with students, asking them about the, um, the police in the schools. And I believe that sergeant and officer were part of that. And then there's another video. I, I watched, I think, a couple or three. So if folks wanna hear what the students shared, that's a great way, another great way of hearing their voices. And the YouTube videos have been helpful for me because I've been looking at a lot of those videos. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, Mr., um, uh, Chief Clifford, when you mentioned knowing your officer, as a former teacher, one of the biggest things that is important for, to teachers is to build a relationship with the students, right? Cause when things happen in the classroom, you're able to engage or in the hallway or in the cafeteria, you're able to engage with that student on a very personal level, right? And then having, and as you, so going back to the police officers in the school, what better way to alleviate a certain circumstance than having someone who knows the students, right? If you have someone, anyone, it wouldn't even be, it could be someone from the street coming into the school. The way they would interact with a student who they don't know, who's behaving in an inappropriate way, it could be challenging. But that relationship is huge and a lot of the research in education, as many of our educators know here, is all about relationships. The other thing is a paradigm shift to have, you know, historically, and I was a former social studies teacher, absolutely understand the systemic issues as Mr. Green had mentioned, and you also alluded to Superintendent Soler. There is so much historical baggage, right, and truths behind policing in schools. The way that Schenectady is doing like we do everything is very innovative, right? We're not forcing, we're, we're having people or officers that look like the students who have lived in Schenect- who live in Schenectady, who are former students in Schenectady, role models. Role models that look like them, that then they can start fighting the system in a different way. In a way that they see people who have also done things to get to the level that they're at to help their students, to help our students in Schenectady. So I think, I mean, it, it is a very tough conversation. But I think what the two officers have been doing in Schenectady, I've actually heard from community members as well, and many are very happy. From my point of view, I've heard good things. I've heard concerns prior to it. But the way that I've heard that both officers have built authentic relationships, not just relationships, authentic relationships has really impacted our students and I think it can impact our district. So, thank you.
To, to your point, Bernice, that if someone walked in and they needed to build a relationship to treat someone differently, it speaks specifically to the culture and the systems and structures that we're fighting against, that we're trying to change. Um, Chief Clifford, you even mentioned that, um, I, I forget exactly how you worded it, that there were some officers, um, that you wouldn't want to be a part of this program. Um, or that if an officer from outside the school showed up, they would treat our children differently than these officers because these officers got to know our children. Those are the types of issues that, um, a number of community members are concerned with. Um, there was a community survey that just, um, ended, the Black Freedom Project, um, and working with researchers at CUNY who are right now taking that data. Um, 500 surveys predominantly from the city of Schenectady, 12304, 12307, 12303, um, utilizing, uh, Sicum food pantry as well as the libraries to reach the voices of individuals that don't have access to the internet, that normally wouldn't be asked. And they were all individuals that identified as black. Um, I look forward to having the opportunity to share those results, um, with this board and with the community um, to see what are some of those other issues that the community wants addressed? Uh, cause the survey was specifically about having safe and healthy communities. And the questions were around policing in our schools. Um, and I can tell you as someone who has spoken to hundreds of those individuals myself, um, not everyone has the same idea, right? There are some people that very much say, we want more police. There are others that say that they don't and give very specific reasons as to why. Um, so if we're going to change policing and really be, um, reinventing what that looks like, I hope there's an opportunity to hear those voices as well.
And I wonder, I mean, one of the things I used to ask my students is, is years ago, does the person make the badge or the badge make the person?
Um, it's a system built on poisoned soil.
Absolutely, but it goes to your first comment when you were talking about, um, uh, uh, Chief Clifford and, you know, trying to get people that, I'm paraphrasing, that are like the two officers that are working in our school. But I mean, I think absolutely the system, but it's also about who we're going to be bringing into our district. We're being very strategic about it. We're just not going to bring people, they're vetted. I mean, there's an interview process, they have to go through training. So I think that all of us are not looking at this as, oh, we're just gonna hire anyone. I think with any position, you wanna make sure you get the right person for the right organization. And in this case, it's Schenectady City Schools.
And I think if we do this well, and again, I showed you that model of like one to 1,000. We're not, we're not going that route where like they're recommending one officer for every thousand kids. I wouldn't recommend that to the board.
Mm-huh.
But for 9,300 students that we have, I believe, you know, five officers in the schools with a, with a, the ability to have a supervisor that floats and can respond is appropriate for us. And if we get to the point where we don't need that, I, I think that's great. I think that's great. I, I don't have the confidence to say we're there now because I would not wanna be the individual of something significantly were, to happen in one of our schools, to say we had the opportunity to have another layer, another mitigation layer and, and we just didn't do it because of fear. And I just wanna, just, I want us to keep trying this. I think it's a, it's the right thing to do. Uh, and if it doesn't work, we can walk away. And that, that's will be the design of the contract. That if it's not working well, or we don't have anything working well, or he can't get us an officer. He may not be able to get us one, right? He's at recruitment issues too, then, then we don't fill it. But, you know, for me to have a point one-four of an investment of our overall budget on another layer of, of safety, uh, I think is, is pretty sound. And, and you don't have to make a decision tonight. I'll bring, if you give me the go-ahead to continue to work, I'll work with Chief Clifford. We'll bring a proposal to the board for consideration to be included, um, uh, you know, for board approval. We can enter the contract, finish out the year, they can finish out with us. And then in the, uh, July 1, we can start getting the additional folks on board.
I, I just wanna say one more thing. I do think, um, hearing the student who spoke as well as Mr. Green was, um, pretty powerful for me.
So, uh, I'm look, seeing a lot of nodding heads here, so I'm thinking that?
Kathy, I, I did have just a couple of other questions. Um, I did notice under the security monitor that it does mention that, um, I believe that there would be the use of surveillance. What is the surveillance? How is it used?
The security monitor? Yeah, so, wanna talk to that, Jeff? The surveillance?
Rouse, it's just the existing cameras.
That we have in our existing building.
So they would, uh, basically what we're trying to do is screen as they'll sit at the desk and look at some of the cameras we already currently have. Right now, we don't even have that. We don't even have personnel that does that. So we've invested in technology in some of our buildings and we don't have anybody dedicated to even watch cameras. And sometimes, you know, doors get cracked open, things like that. So that's part of that surveillance approach.
So one of the other things too that they mentioned or is listed here is, is, um, being engaging for truancy, right, and discipline. So what are the, like, under what issues for truancy are we talking? Chronic truancy? Are we talking?
Hallway skipping is a big one. Kids don't wanna necessarily always go in there. So that, like, first level of response to truancy, making sure kids get in when the bell gets in, you know, gets engaged. The CEOs wouldn't be necessarily involved, uh, like attendance like that. And they're in the hallways helping out, making sure kids go on classes. But our school safety staff would be, you know, positioned throughout the building, making sure when the bell rings, kids get where they need to go. No one's in bathrooms hiding, no one's in hallways. No one's doing anything, you know, sneaking into an auditorium. Um, you know, those are the things that we, uh, don't want our kids to do. Uh, but sometimes if you don't inspect that, you can find some kids doing some things, not making, uh, some sound decisions. So that's the kind of surveillance and truancy we're talking about. We have the attendance folks that do the actual truancy when the kids don't come, you know, the attendance referrals, those kinds of things like that.
Okay, and so they would actually be engaging the families and going to their homes for the truancy and the discipline? But the attendance for like?
Yeah, so the security monitors, they may be utilized to do some of those home visits. So sometimes folks can't go out, they may go out and do that home visit.
Okay, and the only other question I had is, is, you know, kinda looking at our district, right? So I think we've been working from a deficit as it relates to having the necessary counselors and, and so forth, right? Kinda?
Yep.
You know, aligned, uh, there as far as?
What is our capacity to have staff that will follow up? Because the goal is for them to be in class, right? And if we don't know the why, it's not that we want to continue to police their bodies about where they are, but to encourage them to be in the classroom to learn because they're all capable of success. So what is our capacity for that? And then I promise, the, the last thing that I will say, I promise, um, is, is that I do have hope for that world. Um, it's because we need to be able to imagine or reimagine that things could be different than what we've only been presented with. And giving our school community and our larger community the, the opportunity to think differently. And not just that here is the option because that's the only option we've ever had, but that we could get to that place where we are preventing these things from happening. And while we do live in one of the most impoverished cities in the state, um, those, those crimes that are associated with feeding your family or selling drugs and underground economies because you were in jail once and now you can't get a job, those are system structures and policies that we can change that prevent those things from happening. So I do have that hope that we get to a place where we don't need police in our schools or we are able to change what it looks like, as long as we are able to always reimagine our future.
Yeah, so, um, first point, capacity. Uh, you know, I would tell you, we do a pretty good job following up with the majority of kids. Sometimes we don't have the capacity in a day to hit everybody, you know? Sometimes you do a hall check, there's 50, 60 kids, and I'm just gonna pick on the high school, that may end up in the cafeteria because they didn't get to class on time. So we gather them up. I know Mr. Green, Mr. Chank, and the counselors, the engagement deans, uh, Philip Weinman, they go through, they get their names. What's going on? This is the first time I saw you. This is the second time I saw you. You know, they try to give some level of intervention consequence. They use the CCSs right now, which are still part of our plan, to do some of that case management. Um, to say, hey, you got these six or seven kids in there, let's check in, let's figure out a restorative circle. They've even done restorative circles in the cafeteria to figure out why you're not going in the class. You know, I, I think that's always good.
There's a need.
Yeah, there's a need and that's always our intention.
If we don't have the capacity to reach all those 50 kids, how do we reach all those 50 kids?
Yeah, and I think that's part of the work that we're doing. We're continuing to increase capacity. Again, I said, we'll have more school counselors, we'll have more of that staff as well. Uh, but when, when one of those individuals gets super belligerent, maybe strikes another student, strikes another staff member, we have to also be prepared for that too. Maybe brings in a weapon, you know? Our staff aren't trained for that. They're not trained to, to, to take a weapon off of a kid. And we gotta be honest about that. Now, it doesn't happen often, but if it does happen, you know, we gotta be prepared for that too. And so I hope we get to that place you talk about. I, I, I would love a world like that. I'd love a world where college was for free. I, I'd love all these things because they do change the narrative. But where I'm at now, this is something I believe is important. And if we can work it out of business, then we will work it out of business. Ultimately, at the end of the day, if we do our work well, our graduation rates will get us out of business because more kids are succeeding typically means that they are able to navigate some of those challenges. They have better resiliency. We've found different ways to provide the right supports. Um, so if we continue to increase our academics, but we have to also be honest, we also have currently some challenges that we gotta continue to address and be prepared for. That, that's all I'm saying for.
Okay, so at this point, we wanna just focus on the CEO, uh, contract.
Sure.
Uh, and language around the agreement with the police department and/or the city, exactly how that's written.
Yeah, so I'll bring back.
It's beyond my pay grade, so, um, so I, I think I saw consensus among the board that that's, we should proceed with that and then we'll have something to approve at a later point. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted the board's blessing to continue and bring something back for vote. And if it gets voted, great. If it doesn't, I also understand that as well. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief, and Sergeant Linnear and Mr. Rivera, Patrolman Rivera. All right, uh, we have a resolution approving the placement of certain special education pupils. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
No, Lani, second?
Second, Bernice.
Any discussion around this? All right, having none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We have personnel items, a resolution approving consent items 7A1 to 7C concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept a motion to approve these items.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Consular. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have? And then we have our business items, a resolution authorizing the refund of certain taxes pursuant to certain court orders. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Second.
I got to get caught up with the computer here, just a moment. Okay, so Bernice moved that and seconded. Any discussion concerning the tax cert items? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We also have a resolution accepting the treasurer's report for the month ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Priscilla, second?
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution accepting the central treasurer's report for the month ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second, Noelani.
Noelani, okay. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have, again, a resolution awarding a contract as a result of a bid for additional special education transportation. Speaking about transportation we have tonight. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Noelani, second?
Second, Bernice.
Bernice, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And now we're at a point where we have an opportunity for comments from board members. Again, if you have any comments regarding anything or?
As we have presentations for these meetings. I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to look at Zoom as a way for us to share information? Because right now, we have a camera, it points at us, it points at the screen. Zoom gives the capabilities that we'd be able to still see us on video, but also show the slides for those that are watching at home. And you can, Zoom can go right to YouTube, right? So it's not like additional step. But I think it would be helpful, as we are able to see this, that other folks would be able to see it in real time as we're having these discussions. And then the other thing, for vacation week working parents. May you find a way to juggle all of the things. Because of COVID, we are still facing like a lack of services for our children, especially for working parents. The programs that were available during vacation week are still not open. And so it's a bit of a challenge. So to parents and caregivers that are working and trying to juggle that balance during vacation week. If you have any suggestions, if you have programs that you've learned about. Please send it to us by email so we can share it with other parents. This isn't the last vacation we'll have, because it's a real struggle.
Are we not offering STEM programs?
Yeah, we have some, I was just going to say, we have.
Two schools?
We have one of the principals here at Kane, they're doing some STEM over the, starting on Monday.
On the break?
Yeah, over the break.
And I know that MYSI is doing some programs down in their location.
Well, if there are, again, like, what are the hours, how do parents register?
I believe the STEM program was on our website, I think I saw it there.
We pushed it out, we're looking at Kane, we pushed it out, a trial, we put a couple of photo on it.
Right.
It was sold into, we had, we did three pushes when we were passed. Fifty and fifty, we're doing a trial experience to see if we can break to sale, and it was definitely an interest for sure. And we have a really exciting new camp of kids, so the ten, eight-thirty to two-thirty, ten children, one teacher, one parent professional. Four services in the building, practice and multiple staff provided every single day, they're getting paid to call them, they're on the.
Okay, that's awesome.
But I think, I think the point is scale, so I think we got to work on scale. And I know for April break, Dr. Kodo's already planning a larger scale of this. Because we are piloting now, going bigger during April break. I think the other thing, too, board member, I just want to make sure, what you're looking for is so the slides show better for people watching online?
Yeah, yeah.
I wrote a note.
So they could actually see it.
Right, right, right. I'll work with Justin, we'll figure out something.
I wanted to comment about the MBK event yesterday. And one of the things I don't think anyone else had emphasized. There were a number of friends of the two young men who spoke. And I had an opportunity afterwards to speak with them. And what struck me is that this program actually started in the Schenectady School District in two thousand eighteen. And I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I feel as if I've been in suspended animation for the last couple of years. In some instances, it feels as if the world has flown by. And in other things, it's like, didn't we just do that? I mean, you know, it happened, it happened three years ago, and I'm thinking it was yesterday. So what impressed me about the program is that some of these young men started in the eighth grade. They're now juniors in high school. And the staff and the people running the program, the MBK program, have been able to keep in contact with them and keep them motivated. And this was very significant. And then, of course, those who started in ninth grade are actually graduating. And I told them I was going to be happy to see them cross whatever stage we have in June for graduation. And that they've been able to stick with it. All of the young people in the audience committed to graduating, and that was very impressive. The other announcement is that it is February. And members of the public are invited to run for a seat on the Schenectady City School District Board of Education. Two positions are open this year for elections. And petitions to do so are available from the clerk of the board in the district office at one-oh-eight Education Drive. Or they are posted on the website as well. And that's my last announcement.
Just got one quick announcement, spring sports are open. So if you want to register to play spring sport, family IDs, new system we use online, makes it really easy for folks. So you can go right on, just want to make sure.
So you're promising spring?
Yeah, 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 it is going to come. I haven't seen my shadow yet, but it is coming.
Okay, so we, I guess tomorrow we are supposed to get close to sixty degrees.
Fifty-eight, yeah.
So that's, that'll be a welcome. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second, Bernice.
Okay, I just got to get back to my script. So all those in favor, that was Jamaica and Bernice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, and thank all of you who are on.